Good evening and welcome to the Lakeville City Council meeting. It is December 2nd, it is 7:00 PM, and I call our meeting to order. Please rise if you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your equality for which its hands, or my nation, God and God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Volk, Anderson.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Hellier.
Here.
Here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name.
I didn't hear my name.
No, I can say it because I draw a blank, because I forgot to put their name badges up.
Thank you very much.
I don't know what is that now.
So, we will move on to our next, our next item on our agenda is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for us to hear from our residents and business owners if you have a comment or question for us as City Council, or something you'd just like to share with the community. We allow up to three minutes, and if you do have a comment to make at this time, please raise your hand, and when I call on you, come forward and make sure you speak directly into the microphone. If you are here for our two public hearings, one is on the fee schedule and the other is our truth and taxation hearing, we'll take comments at that time, so you can hold those comments till then. But is there anyone that would like to make a citizen comment at this time? Yes, sir. Please come forward. And please state your name and address as well. Thank you.
My name is Chris Erickson, 18971 Inlet Road here in Lakeville. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Other council members. I'm here on behalf of Lakeville Friends of the Environment, just to encourage and support the city in its efforts to pursue its Green Step Cities accreditation. We had a great meeting with Neil Norman up at the, up at the lake, at the water treatment center, and he spent a lot of time giving us some great information about what the city is doing and what he's hoping to be able to do to be able to advance it up to the second and the third steps. Lakeville Friends of the Environment always just wants to be active participants and partners with the city and, and making the city more, more resilient and sustainable, and we're hoping that we can be instrumental in, in encouraging community participation. So we're just, just here to say thank you and encourage you in that.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. I want to thank you, your group as well, for sponsoring the ride with, bicycle ride with the mayor every fall, and so we're looking forward to that again here in about nine more months after the snow goes away. Mr. Miller, would, could you just take about one or two minutes and just talk about what Green Steps Cities are?
Sure, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. Green Step Cities is a program that the state of Minnesota through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has sponsored, and it outlines a series of steps that cities can take to become more environmentally conscious and to improve the environment. The first step, there's actually, I think, five or six steps that you can get to. The first step, the City Council met just by adopting a resolution that enrolled us in the project. Since then, we are getting credit for a lot of the things that we're already doing, and we believe that that, those steps alone will get us to step two, and we've submitted that information to the state and are awaiting the results of that. And then hopefully, once we get that, we'll continue to look at those other things that we need to do to continue to proceed through the process.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate the comment. Thank you for being here, Chris. Any other citizen comments for this evening? Yes, sir?
I'm here with some scouts tonight, but I've always been wanting to come see you.
Could you, could you start with your name and your address, please?
Gary Bungert, 9657-173rd Street West in Lakeville.
Thank you very much.
I'm approximately a 49-year resident of Lakeville.
Awesome.
But I started in the Lakeville Township before it became part of Lakeville.
Awesome.
Matt Little said that it's best if you start with a story and then take your point. So, brief story. Several years ago, I had teenagers, drivers, park on the street because my wife's girl, or my son's girlfriend took my spot. Note to self, it's after November 1st, go out, move the car. Yeah, I forgot to do that after she left, and like clockwork got my ticket for parking on the street overnight. So, I'm a big fan that we should do some type of a smarter program like some cities have that isn't just time-dependent, that is actually snowfall-dependent, because I think the premise is that you want to plow the streets to maintain them and/or be able to get emergency vehicles through them, et cetera. So, I think that the downside is that you'd have to spend some money on some new signage that doesn't, you know, coincide with the opposite of the water season, not, not, and I think the other downside would be that you might lose up to $25,000 of parking ticket revenue, so that might be a barrier to implementing it. But I'd be a big fan of seeing that changed. As an alternative, an easier alternative might be to relax a little bit about issuing the parking tickets under the current one, like, you know, if there isn't any snow in the street and it is plowed to the width, to not ticket or possibly give warnings. So, I offer that for consideration. At some later date, I might come back with a more formal proposal, but I thought that I would offer that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comment.
Are you Tim's dad?
Uncle.
Okay. Say hi.
Thank you very much. Any other citizen comments for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is to turn to our city administrator and see if we have any additional agenda information for tonight.
Mayor, just one amendment to the agenda, it's item 16T. It was actually the agreement for the Teamsters Union contract. The item in your packet originally had two wrong dates. Those are highlighted on your desk tonight. One is in the table of contents, one is on the signature page, and those have been corrected. Other than that, there's no changes to the document.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I also believe that item number five, which was originally on our agenda, our Police Department quarterly report, has been deferred to our next meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you. So we will move to our consent agenda. These are matters we consider to be more routine in the nature of the business of the city. And Mr. Miller, I'll go back to you again, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple items. Item 6D and 6E are both carried over from your previous meeting. These are items that required four votes, and since we only had three members at the last meeting, they've been carried over tonight, and as long as the consent agenda approves, or is approved at a 4-0 vote, this would meet those qualifications, so thank you for that. Item 6J, the Planning Commission and the city staff are recommending approval of a conditional use permit amendment, which would allow High Point Childcare downtown Lakeville to expand. This went through the Planning Commission, and there were no issues there, and so we are recommending approval of that. And then item 6P is an approval of an interim use permit, which would allow outdoor display and sales of recreational vehicles and equipment at the Gander Outdoors property. This is required, and they've met all the requirements to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience or council, any items on the consent agenda that you would have any questions about or would desire further discussion? Hellier?
Just process-wise, do we need a vote by roll call versus voice vote?
We don't necessarily need to do that, as long as, as the consent agenda implies that everything on it is going to get approved, the minutes will so record that all, that all four of us are, were voted in the affirmative, so. Is there anything that anybody has a concern about? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sumo.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we can do this by voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, 4-0. We'll move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is on the adoption of a fee schedule by ordinance. This is a public hearing. We'll start with a staff report from our Finance Director, Geraldine Erickson, and then we will have some discussion probably as council first, and then we'll open it up for any public comment, if there is any, and we follow the same rules as citizen comments. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just want to point out a couple of changes with the rates for 2020. I won't go through the entire list. Staff did go through and make changes based on, for example, a number of the wage rates that we charge out related to potentially with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, adjusted those, it was, had not been adjusted for a couple of years. Our utility rates, we had discussed at an October workshop, there are increases in the water and sewer, environmental resources, and so forth. That equates to about, for a property using about 18,000 gallons per quarter, equates to about a $14 to $15 increase per quarter, so just under $5 per month. We did update, just a little bit of background on that for the, the public, we do have a 10-year utility rate model that we use and update each year, looking out 10 years at projects that are planned, the goal of eliminating the use of debt for replacement of utility infrastructure, and so we use that model to determine what our rate should be, trying to moderate that over the 10-year period. So it does include rate increases for the water, sewer, environmental resources, and streetlights. And then one final change, we discussed implementing credit cards for other applications. Right now, we accept them for some park and recreation, and for utility payments, we discussed expanding the use of credit card payments for building permits and special assessments and other miscellaneous billings, and passing through the cost of using the credit cards to the customer. And so that is about 2.75% of the transaction, if it's over $100. If it's less than $100, it's the 2.75% of the amount plus 50 cents. So if there are any other questions regarding the other fee changes?
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none. They could just stand by. This is a public hearing. If there is anybody that would like to comment on this matter, again, we handle this the same way as we do citizen comments, allow up to three minutes. If you do have a comment to make, please raise your hand, and when I call on you, come forward, speak directly into the microphone, and start by stating your name and your address. Is there any comments on this matter tonight? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Sumo.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, shall our roll call, please?
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Any further questions on this? We've had a lot of discussion on these at a work session as well. Is there, is there a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the ordinance adopting fees and summary publication of ordinance, and number two, move to approve the resolution adopting the fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Shall our roll call, please?
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye. The motion carries. So we'll move on to our next matter, which is our public hearing on the 2020 tax levy and budget. And again, this works the same way, and so Ms. Erickson is back with us to give a brief presentation in terms of our budget for this next year.
Yes, I have a few slides here to highlight some of the major points of our process, as well as the changes for the 2020 budget and the tax levy. First of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to the many people that are involved with this process. We do start back in May, and just wrapping it up now, so it's about six, seven-month process. And of course, I'd like to thank the department heads and the supervisors and all of their staff that provide thoughtful input on the budget. I'd also like to extend my thanks to the finance staff, who are very involved with working with the departments and putting together, together all of the documents that you have this evening. They will also be putting together a budget document that we put out on the website and is available to the public. And then I'd also like to thank Administrator Miller and the council members for the many discussions that we've had at all of the public meetings, workshops, and then the council meeting tonight, so thank you very much. The tax levy for 2020 is going up, or proposed to go up about 2.1 million. It's a 6.95% increase from about 29, just about 30 million up to 32 million. This provides funding for operations, capital, maintenance, and debt service, and I will go through on a different slide, a number of positions that have been added as part of this budget process. This slide shows a breakdown of the tax levy. You can see the majority of the tax levy goes to support the activities in the general fund, but we also have about 1.1 million in pavement management for our streets and so forth, funding in the equipment fund for equipment replacement, park improvement fund, replacement in the parks, and trail improvement fund, improvements to the trails, replacement and so forth. About 23% of the levy goes towards debt service, and that's something that we look at each year as we are issuing debt, and how much debt we're issuing, and what the impact will be on the tax levy, because typically, the tax levy is going to have a tail of maybe 10 to 15 years, so it's about 23% of the tax levy for 2020. For 2020, the community growth from new construction has been about 235 million. This is about 3.2%. The overall increase in the market value base was about 10.2%, of which 3.2% was from new growth, and about 7% from existing properties increasing their valuation. This, the 235 million generates just about a million dollars' worth of property taxes, and it's not new property taxes, but it's within the 32 million that you would be adopting this evening. This chart shows the last 10, 13 years of market value growth from new construction, and you can see that we are at a high point of about 235 million, and the last high point was in 2007, at 232 million. Just another chart showing the breakdown of the market value growth from new construction. The majority of it is from residential, that is about 187 million, and from commercial is about 5.8 million. That's the small red column there, and then about 4 million from industrial, and about 37 million from apartments. Our tax capacity rate continues to decline. It is at the lowest since 2010, and you can see the last three years, 2018, 2019, and 2020, are lower than the 2010 rate. Now, the 2020 is just an estimate, and we'll get accurate numbers after the new year. The impact on the median valued home, which is valued at 328,500, is about a $60 increase. This is a combination of an increase in valuation, as well as an increase in the tax levy. The impact of this levy on what, a million-dollar commercial property, and we assume that it's a million dollars, and it increased about 3.7%, that was the aggregate increase in commercial properties, the impact would be about $56 increase. This chart shows a breakdown of the revenues by source within the general fund. Again, the general fund is the primary fund for many of the operations of the city, police, fire, streets, engineering, finance, administration, and so forth. And you see that the majority of it, about 72%, is from property taxes. We are planning to use general fund reserves for one-time expenditures, funding the equipment fund, 350,000, funding for the building fund, 200,000, an inspections position that is proposed, it's about 100,000, half of the costs associated with an election for next year, some ordinance updates carried over from 2019, and the Siren relocation of 13,000, so about 750,000. The city has a policy to maintain its general fund, fund balance ratio between 40 and 50%, and you can see in that last column that we are right at about 45% projecting what our year-end fund balance ratio will be at the end of 2020. And so that looks at the following year with some assumptions about 2021, what the expenditures will be, factored in maybe about a 3% cost of living adjustment or index change, plus also, there's always transition costs associated with positions that we propose and we fill mid-year, and that's about $200,000. This chart shows the expenses by function for the $31 million, and public safety is the majority, it's about 46% of the expenses. I do show a chart there to the left. Some people assume that it's a 50-50 split between police and fire. It is not, so about 40% of the general fund expenditures, expenditures is for police, and about 7% for fire. The new positions that are included in the proposed budget include two police officers, one starting on April 1st, and the other one starting on December 15th. One street's maintenance, two positions starting on July 1st, a building inspector position starting on March 1st, and a GIS technician. This GIS technician is actually split between the general fund and the utility funds, and that position would start on April 1st. The utility funds are also included in the budget, and they include the 2020 street reconstruction projects, ongoing major maintenance projects, and they do reflect the rate adjustment set you just adopted. I wanted to point out that the liquor fund supports the tax levy significantly, 1.4 million, and you can see that it's paying about 400,000 for debt service for the police station, which is paid off in 2032. It also funds about a half a million of equipment replacement. It also has debt service associated with the Galaxy Store, and then other expenses associated with administration, technology, some fireworks contributions, and hazardous, hazardous waste drop-off day. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions at this time? Lee?
Just one clarifying question. With taxes being paid twice a year, is the $60 increase an annual increase or a biannual?
That would be an annual increase.
Thank you.
So I had two questions, maybe just to ensure that the public that might be watching or the folks that are here would understand this. One of the questions that's come up the last number of years has been regarding the debt load that the city has in place, and of course, we, we take on debt in terms of street reconstruction and a number of other things. And so my first question is just if you could share a general sense of where that's at and where we're headed with that in terms of a long-range plan, where we think that might be headed. And then the second question I have is kind of around the tax rate, tax capacity rate, and how we stack up with other cities, let's just say, across Dakota County.
Okay. First with the debt. We have about 121 million in debt. As part of our capital improvement program process that we go through earlier this year as well, we do look at continuing to issue debt for our street reconstruction projects. We do factor some in for, on the equipment replacement at this time, specifically for fire trucks. Those tend to be 600 to about 1.2 million dollars for each acquisition. We are striving to get away from issuing any debt or not planning to issue any debt associated with equipment replacement, other than the fire trucks, and try to, to address the concerns about the long-term debt. Another area that we've made some changes in is related to the assessments for the street reconstruction, street reconstruction projects, in that we've shortened the term on some of them, or we have a tiered approach to the special assessments, so that we're not issuing debt too long, or longer than necessary. So we've shortened up those projects as well, the debts for, for that. The tax rate, as of 2019, we were the second lowest in Dakota County. I don't have an update as far as where we are going to be with the final tax levies for 2020.
Thank you.
We'll know that soon. But that is another thing that we look at, trying to keep our tax rate low.
Yeah, and I think your chart showed that really well in terms of how the tax rate has reduced, I think, over the last seven or eight years.
Yes.
And of course, some of that's driven by our growth, which we're fortunate to have that, but it's also the stewardship that occurs in terms of the financial management that you give some leadership to and the rest of the leadership team. So, thank you for that. Any other comments at this time? Otherwise, I'll go to the audience for the public hearing. This is a public hearing, so again, we, this works just like citizen comments, we allow up to three minutes. If you do have a comment regarding our 2020 tax levy and budget or a question, please raise your hand, and when I call on you, come forward, speak directly into the microphone, and start off by stating your name and your address. Is there anyone that has a comment regarding this matter? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Good evening.
Hi there. Rob Leavell, I'm at 17566 High Smith Way. I just have really a question on the police officers. How do we decide when we hire more officers and when we don't? Is it based on population, or is there other aspects, or just curious?
Okay. Great question. We'll have staff respond. Do we want to go, do you want to speak to it, Mr. Miller, or?
Sure, I can take that, Mayor, Council. It's a great question. There's no one factor that we look at. There's several. One is driven by population. As, as the city continues to grow, there continues to be more need for more police officers and more resources in general, but police officer is one of those. Two is just to be sure that our officers aren't being overloaded and try to limit the amount of overtime, and so if we continue to see officers who are working a lot of overtime or who are burned out, it's a sign that we need to add more officers, and so we're doing that. And a third is just to make sure that the Police Department feels like they're providing the service that they feel they can recommend to the City Council requires the community to, to stay safe at the level that we expect. And so we've added police officers, at least one every year for the past couple of years, and as we continue to grow, we'll probably be doing that as well as other positions, like we're adding, requesting to add a, a streets person, as well as a new inspector and some other office staff as well.
Thank you very much. Great question. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Gary Bungert, 9657-173rd Street West, Lakeville, 55044-9191.
Thank you.
At the beginning, it said that the budget, which I think is maybe both income and expense increases approximately 7%, is there another way to characterize that between, I guess, more of an apples-to-apples, if you don't count the income that you get off of the new property base? So, in, in my work budget, you know, I get a goal that says my expenses can't go up more than 3.5%. So 7 is large, but I think it's masked by partly that you, again, Lakeville's growing and you have an income increase, but if it was like same, same, is there a way to characterize what the percentage budget increases?
It's a great question. Ms. Erickson, do you want to respond? I know how I might respond, but...
Well, the overall increase was about 2.1 million, and so new construction is generating about 900,000, and for each percent of increase, it's about 300,000, so it would be about 3% less, and so instead of 6.95, it'd be more like a 3.95%. so instead of 6.95, it would be more like a 3.95% increase.
So if you, if I may just add, if you break it apart, I won't have these numbers exactly right, but if you break it apart, the growth is about 3.2% of percentage points of that 6.9, whatever the number was. Inflation or the CPI for Minneapolis-St. Paul's about 2.6, 2.7 in that range, and then the other 1% or slightly less than 1% is debt, in terms of the cost of the debt. So that's the three main components. So hopefully that helps.
I feel better about that.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. So do we. Other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion about that? Shall our roll call, please?
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Now, Councilmember Hellier, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, it's just a, well, a quick question, and probably a follow-up question, comment. Ms. Erickson, sorry to put you on the spot. I seem to ask this question all the time in work sessions. I know that now it's built into my mind that the police bonds are 2032, but I don't have the right year in my mind on when the Galaxy Bonds are paid off, and I hate to put you on the spot. I don't know if you know that number. If not, we can, it's not going to change what I do tonight. I just was wondering if you knew off the top of your head.
I actually do. 2027.
Okay, we've got some room to work with. All right. Thank you. And just in general, as a comment, I want to thank, you know, you and your staff and the department heads for putting together a great budget, and, you know, we talked about this when we passed the earlier preliminary levy related to police and adding somebody I think is really important. And at the same time, we obviously have growth, so that plays into this, and I think it's a well-rounded budget, and so I plan on voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? I just have a couple. I appreciate the questions, and I do think that when you break apart the 6.9% into the components, it helps us feel, it helps us feel more comfortable with that, with what we're doing. I've been on the City Council, this is my seventh budget, and I think over that period of time, we've become even better at being good stewards of the funds that the public entrusts with us. And, you know, we need to be responsive in terms of our customer service and the expectations that the community has for us, and we kind of confirm that every five years or so with our envisioned Lakeville process, where we engage the community and talk about what are the expectations, what should our priorities be, and so we all desire public safety, right? And so we do add police officers periodically and support our fire department with new fire trucks once in a while, et cetera. And so that does cost money, but we try to do that in the context of being good stewards, and I like the word stewardship. So that's one comment. The second is from a debt load standpoint. I appreciate your comments, and I maybe surprised you a little bit with the question, but I think that we have begun to do a lot of work, particularly driven by input we're getting from our Financial Advisory Committee, which you work with, and great input in terms of looking at the future financial sustainability and resiliency of the city. And at some point in time, and we are nowhere close to being built out in terms of our growth, we have outstanding available land for new businesses to come to town, and we have outstanding available land for new homes to be built. But at some point in time, that's going to slow down, might be 15 years from now. But we need to begin to think, we have to think long-term about how are we going to be responding to that, because this growth thing at some point in time is going to slow down a little bit. And so we are starting to talk, and with the Financial Advisory Committee's input and challenge, quite frankly, to us as a City Council, we have been thinking more about moving toward pay-as-you-go kind of approaches, and Ms. Erickson referred to this earlier with equipment. And we're a long way away from being there, but we have begun to think about how can we get there over a long period of time. So I'm grateful that this budget accomplishes those tasks, and hopefully, as we move forward, we can continue to strive to work on that. And lastly, my comment and why I support this is the tax capacity rate continues to go down. And again, that's a function of our growth, obviously, but I'm proud of what we've been able to do as a city. I know it puts pressure and tension around a budget process when there's kind of this expectation that we're going to continue to become better stewards, because we do have things we need to spend money on. But I, along with just building a budget and considering what new do we need to have, the staff does a great job and looks at what can we do differently. And so I'm grateful for the hard work that goes on, certainly Mr. Miller's leadership and your leadership, Ms. Erickson, and the whole leadership team and staff in terms of building a budget that makes sense for us as a city, and I fully support what's in front of us. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Real quick, I did a little sleuthing while the discussion is going on, and the one city that we were just slightly above last year, their projected rate is not expecting to go down as much. And so if our projections meet the same as the city of Eagan's, ours will be the lowest in Dakota County.
Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you very much. Hellier?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve three resolutions. One, adopting the 2020 property tax levy, two, adopting the 2020 budget, and three, committing general fund balance for specific purposes.
Second?
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, shall our roll call, please?
Lee?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And I'll just add one final comment about great work to the staff. Thank you very much. We'll move on to items nine and 10 in our agenda, unfinished business and new business. Is there any items for discussion tonight, council? Seeing none, then we will move to announcements. Mr. Miller, any announcements for this evening?
Just a quick announcement, that our work sessions, which are normally the fourth Mondays of the month, this month because of the Christmas holidays, will be next week, Monday at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Great, thank you. And along with that, our next regular council meeting is Monday night, December 16th at 7:00 PM. And so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, last announcement, Saturday is holiday on Main in downtown Lakeville from 9:00 to 2:00. Santa will be at the Curling Club.
Thank you. And now, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And there's no discussion with that, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.